Want to stand tonight for the pledge of the flag, please. Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to this May 16 meeting. We've got a full agenda this evening. I wanted to mention that Louis George is fighting the flu. So he won't be with us tonight. So I'm going to try to do Louis's duties and my duties. We'll see how I make out tonight. So minutes of May 2nd meeting, do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
I move.
Second.
Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, very good. We moved along pretty quick there. In fact, we're a few minutes ahead of the public hearing date. So what we're going to do is, Steve, can we move forward with budget amendment?
For a minute. Yeah, budget amendment number 2018-07 is to recognize the forfeiture of $1,500 of seeds funds and their funding of undercover police activities.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment 2018-07? Recognize the forfeiture of seeds funds of $1,500.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. I'm going to go ahead and move forward and I'm going to move forward with proclamation so I don't hold these gentlemen up. I'm going to do proclamation P. 8, 2018, which is National Safe Boating Week, May 19 through May 25, 2018. I'd like to read it if I could. And we'll make this presentation to you gentlemen. Okay, proclamation 8-2018, Safe Boating Week. Whereas many citizens enjoy recreational boating, including fishing, water skiing, waterfowl hunting, canoeing, and kayaking on the waters surrounding Elton and Cecil County; whereas responsible boaters understand the importance of wearing personal flotation devices and carrying additional devices on their vessels; and whereas safe boaters attend U.S. Coast Guard-approved safe boating classes and sure their vessels have passed a U.S. Coast Guard auxiliary vessel safety check. And whereas the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton recognize the voluntary efforts of the United States Coast Guard auxiliary Maryland fluctilius? Is that correct? Safe boating education and practice throughout classroom instruction, vessel examination, and home water patrols. Now therefore, the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton do hereby proclaim May 19 through 25, 2018, a Safe Boating Week. And it's signed by the mayor and commissioners. And we'd like to give this presentation to you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Of course we did. We got our photographer right there. If you've got your camera, we'll get him to use your camera too.
I think I want to get a picture because every week must be some time. I like to get pictures.
Jump right on in here. You guys smiling? That's good right there.
Hold it, okay.
You think it's up?
I think it's up.
All right. Is that it? Thank you, guys. And if not, we'll make sure that Ed will send you one. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you.
Perfect. All right, we're almost right on the button. But prior to that, I wanted to mention that the mayor and commissioners' 2018 meeting schedule, just wanted to remind everybody that there will not be any workshops in the town of Elton in the month of June and/or July. And a reason behind that, we've got the Maryland Municipal Week, which would fall on June 11, and the workshop was on the 13th, so we will not be around. And the week of July 11, we're moving back to our first meeting in July because the first meeting falls on the 4th of July. So we're not, we're going to have the official meeting on the second week of July. So just a couple housecleaning. Okay, now's the most important time of the year. We are, I'd like to open this public hearing at 7:00. We're going to call it 7:05. And it's in regards to ordinance 6-2018 fiscal year, 2019 budget presented for introduction. This is for introduction only. And in a public hearing, we're going to have the board can ask some questions if they need to, and then we open up the floor to the public to make any comments that they see in regards to the budget. And then, of course, then at that point, we'll close the public hearing, and then we're going to vote to accept or amend the budget for introduction. And then at that point, we'll bring it back again on the first meeting, the first meeting in June, and then we would vote on it for acceptance. But between today, if it gets accepted as introductory purposes, until we actually accept the budget, there can be changes made with this. So what we do tonight is not certainly carved in stone. So what I have commissioners on the board is the general fund expenditures. As you can see, fiscal '19 compared to fiscal '18. If you go all the way down to the bottom, I think that's the main thing you want to see. Our expenditures have gone up to $18,125,425 as opposed to the current fiscal that we're in now at $12,806,095. It looks like a tremendous increase in our budget, but we have budgeted over $3.5 million for the community center in that amount. So if you add the community center into that, that takes you up to about 1.6, and then the rest of it is pretty much the capital. But I'm going to explain that to you as we move forward with the slides. So there's a slight increase in public safety, public works, parks and rec, our debt service, our economic development will stay the same. Our donations increase slightly because our fire department donation is based on revenue that the town receives on real estate taxes. So Michelle, if you could click. And as you can see on the slide here, it shows a percentage of what we have. Forty percent of our town budget goes to public safety. Twenty-seven percent of our budget goes to public works. Twenty-seven percent goes for general government. One percent of our budget goes for donations throughout the town. One percent we use for economic development reasons. There's about 2% for parks and rec. And then our debt service encompasses about 2% of the overall budget. When you look at this graph, there's some things that I think I mentioned in the past. I think that, one, our economic development number, quite frankly, is low. If we want to attract new businesses, we might have to be able to increase that in some manners. Our debt service is absolutely far lower than probably any municipality that I think that you'll see possibly, I'll go out on a limb and say even possibly in the state of Maryland. So if you take a 2% debt service compared to what your overall budget is, that's pretty sharp, pretty sharp. Could you click the next page? Okay, what you see here, this is a slide we put up last year, 2002, you can see our tax rate was .44, and in 2019, we're at .6356. Last fiscal year, we did have an increase from 5.5856 in 2017 to the .6356 in 2018. So this budget will keep the tax rate the exact same as it currently is today. All right, get the next one. All righty. So what you'll see here is the constant yield rate with the adopted tax rate and these unassigned fund balance analysis. So currently, as you've seen over the years, the town fiscal end year unassigned fund balance has fluctuated. I can tell you that in fiscal 2018, we won't know that number until around January.
A little bit earlier, but at late fall.
In late fall. But I feel pretty comfortable to say that it'll still be a fair number that's in there, even though we are going to be using fund balance, a large amount of fund balance this year to be able to fund the capital equipment. Next page. Okay, this is the highlights. Number one, as you can see up there, the proposed property tax rate will stay the same as we are in fiscal year '18. Number two, the proposed business personal property tax will stay the same as it was in '18. Our quarterly trash collection fee will stay the same as it is currently today. I wanted to point out, as I pointed out in the workshop, number four, I'm projecting possibly a 30% decrease, which equals about $360,000 in state income tax revenue. We're still working on that. I did not use, I think we actually used that, the budget number less, which we had to. So we actually, in the current budget that you have in front of us, it has a deduction of $360,000. I truly believe that there's an error with the state mapping system. We're working on that daily. I think at some point, we'll get some conclusion on that, but it's not going to happen by the time we accept this budget. So there's about a $360,000 question mark that I have, but I can't budget for that because I don't know the answer. In this budget also are the salary adjustments. The Elton Police Department are under a collective bargaining agreement with the town of Elton. And in that agreement, there's a 2% COLA, which takes effect July 1, and there's also a 3% increase on the anniversary date, which takes the total amount, our collective bargaining agreement, to 5% total increase in the Elton Police Department. And I think that when you look at that slide that we showed you earlier with the Elton Police Department, that increase, that's pretty much where I would say the large portion of it goes, is as in increase in salaries. All other non-police employees, we are, in this budget, I have put a 5% salary adjustment. You know, I use the word salary adjustment, but you could also call it a raise or a salary. I don't know how others say it, but I feel if part of your employees are getting an increase, I believe that all the employees should get an increase. That's my feeling. We can adjust that if need be. The Public Works Department, we're going to fund two new general fund positions. One is going to be strictly for all the sidewalks and street spru throughout the town of Elton. The other is for grass maintenance. We believe the projected health increase will be at 4%. Steve, can you give us any, enlighten us anymore on that?
Just this morning, I had an email, and Ed has come back with no increase, as Signet proposed an even bigger decrease. So that was just this afternoon. We're still working the budget, we're still working the 4%.
Very good. Well, that's good news. Because I could actually come down. Fantastic. Okay, the next page, page eight. The Maryland Main Street program, we're going to continue to fund. We've been funding this for many years, and that's $100,000. And then on our economic development would be $25,000. Now, if you add them both up together, it's $125,000 that would be used for collectively economic development. The neighborhood community center that we budgeted this year is for $3.5 million. Now, we believe that we've, well, not we don't believe, we have committed a fund balance of $500,000 that can be used toward that 3.5. And then we would borrow from ourselves. We would self-fund this project. We would take $3 million from our sewer fund, and we would pay ourselves back at an interest rate that this board agrees upon. Now, I can also tell you that we have applied for multiple grants to help bring those costs down. One grant was for $800,000, and I think the other grant was for $500,000. So that number of 3 million could easily be down to 1.7, which I feel pretty comfortable to say that, speaking with our delegation, I think that they're going to really help the town development push through with this community grant. Loan proceeds in the amount of $967,632 is for the purchase of capital equipment. That capital equipment, I think, include, well, it includes, let me see if I've got the page here on it. I don't believe I do have that page here on the capital equipment. But I know that from the Police Department, it's seven cars. I know that from Public Works, it was about four new trucks and the associated equipment with that. But I think the board has had all that information in front of them. The new debt service that we would be looking at, if we borrow the money against ourselves of the sewer fund, it would be about, this is only for a partial year, partial six months?
Half year, no interest.
Half year, no interest, was $75,000 for the sewer fund loan. In subsequent years, it would be at least $150,000 at that full amount, plus interest rate that we decide. That $967,632 that's on line 11, what we've done is we're going to go ahead, and this will be the first year that we go out and actually get a physical loan. The last four years, we have used general fund money, fund balance, and we paid for all the capital equipment without taking any loans. So this $106,923 would be the debt service for a, how many year loan would that be?
Sixty month, five years.
It would be for a five-year loan that would take care of the remainder of that $967. Our fund debt balance that we're going to need to balance this budget is going to be about $1.776,740,000. Approximately, that would be using up approximately 69% of the unassigned balance. Once again, as we were going through this, we were talking about the 4% for the healthcare, which would go back into this. Some of these other, these are all budgeting numbers, and I have to say, I normally tend to budget on the higher side than the lower side. So the next page is our Water and Sewer Fund budget highlights. There will be no increase to the water rate. We're going to put in this budget one new position for a water crew maintenance person. Also, this budget includes $325,000 for the water main and valve replacements. It also proposes capital purchases of $501,250. And it'll also use fund balance in the amount of $983,812. Now, fund balance out of, I'm a little confused with that line.
From the water fund.
From the water fund.
From the water fund.
Gotcha. Next year. '19. '19. So the sewer fund, once again, there will be no increase in our sewer rate. We're going to create an additional position out of the sewer fund, one sewer crew maintenance worker. In this, there's $3 million loan to the general fund for the neighborhood community center. But once again, I want to stress that I don't believe that we'll be using that full amount. Also, capital purchases for the amount of $331,500. And also, we're going to have to use the fund balance for the amount of $3,420,892 is the highlight. Well, Ford, any questions, any comments?
Personally, I see that all of that is agreeable to me.
I think it's one of the best budgets I got a chance to follow. I'm always all around pages, but you've done a great job in there. I just want you and staff to make sure I throw that in there. I may have a little bit to it. That is a good question.
Thank you. Gene, you have any comments? Mary Jo, I think you had a comment you wanted to vote.
I just want to say the budget is, I agree with the budget. You did a great job. It's self-explanatory, so I appreciate that. But I do want to say for the Parks and Rec budget, I was going through the book, and there's so many programs that we do. And what I'd like to see is an expense and revenue breakdown of each program, so in order to move forward with the Neighborhood Community Center. So we could see what's making money, what's not. Is there something that should not be, should be dropped, and we add something new? But I would really like to see that happen to get started with this community center.
I think that's good because in addition to that, the mayor and I agree, said that we need to get more revenue from that program. And again, I agree with you.
Thank you. I think, Steve, can you provide it to the board?
That from Mary McGaw. There's not the detail that there used to be, but different activity is all credited to one activity fee revenue account. She certainly has a breakdown. I can bet that from her.
And I found my list of capital equipment here, so I'm going to read it off real quick. In the general fund, we have, we're looking at seven new police vehicles with equipment. And as I stressed before, each one of these cars are mobile workstations. And I get asked a lot of times, they'll say, "Well, why is that police car running all the time, Mayor? You know, you're costing the town of Elton money." Quite frankly, they have to run. You have to cool that equipment. They are mobile workstations, and it's very, very important. I know that the rebooting time it would take to turn that thing back on, it would put probably people in danger if we didn't have them running. Is that correct in my assessment?
Yes.
Or close enough, I guess?
Yeah, close enough.
Okay. Also, we've got six defibrillators, and we're looking at a couple servers, desktops, laptops, and computers. This budget does fund two K-9 dogs. We have one K-9 dog that is retiring, and we're going to go ahead and take advantage. And town of Elton will have two K-9 dogs. Also, the new voiceover IP system, and also eight new downtown cameras, which the chief and I have been talking about, which will extend down West High and go down Landing Lane, and hopefully look into one of our areas that we patrol a lot. In the Public Works Department, we have a five-ton freight liner dump truck, some shop tools, three Ford F-350s, a Ford 450, a new chipper, a new track loader, a couple landscape trailers. The budget from the water fund, capital equipment that we showed you up there, also had, when we share our piece of equipment with the water department or the sewer department, we actually, it's not like we're buying additional equipment. What we're doing is sharing the cost out of those funds for that piece of equipment. So the water department will be sharing the cost of a half-ton pickup truck, also the freight liner dump truck, 50% of the BACO, which will be shared with the sewer department. And also, there's about $300,000, maybe $350,000 worth of equipment that's needed in the water plant itself. In the sewer fund expenditures, that other half of that truck, the other half of that freight liner truck, the other half of that BACO, also, we showed all those valves that we were needing to purchase for the force mains, multiple junction boxes, and we've got to replace some items in the plant itself, which are the rotor bearings, the shaft repair, and some check valves and junction boxes. The one thing I didn't touch on was the major facility. There probably, well, there won't be, there could be very little income coming into the major facility because this budget still shows that we've got at least another year on the no hookup fees in the town of Elton, as well as a couple, the front foot assessment, which is normally associated with the major facility fees. Okay, I think that at all. This is a public hearing, and the floor is open. Yes, sir! Come on upwards. Mention, say your name there, sir, and your address.
214 North Street, senior resident. The budget appears to have significant increases where needed. And my only question is, what percentage of the requested budget did say the Public Works and Police Department get? And are they happy?
Currently, as this budget is being presented, it's 100% required, 100% of what the department heads have requested. Thank you. Mr. Lemon?
You mentioned a half a million dollars in the water fund. What's that for?
Half a million dollars in the water fund. Steve, give me that.
For the usual fund balance to balance the budget for water fund, that is basically the, from the equity that's currently in the water fund, you fund just the activities that are coming here from the water fund. Those are the revenue to cover, what is not covered by user fees.
So you're not buying new equipment?
Oh, there is some equipment.
I've heard the newest say that the water plant needs replacement or parts of it, and this and that.
It's in this.
That's part of my question, is this money being used for that purpose?
Some of it is, yes. There's $500,000.
Well, that's what I, half a million dollars.
Yes.
Okay. So we're upgrading the.
The water plant, yes.
Which is pretty important.
Very important.
Another question I have is, not a question, but I guess it is a question. By the way, Mary Jo, that's a very good idea. Checking out that it requires a lot of extra effort to keep a record on stuff like that, but that's, it gives you guidance going forward. That's a good idea. The parking meters, I think you're, and I'm going by memory, I forgot to bring my paperwork. But I think in the budget, it's $14,000 for parking meter revenue. And then you have in this budget, a parking meter attendant, which I don't know, and that's my question is, what are the, how does that work out? Are we just trading dollars, or what are we doing? I think, like, if you go to Newark, they have new meters, and I think they're probably coin and money on the parking meters. courting money on the parking meters. We may not want to go in that direction, but we may want to go in the other direction, get rid of parking meters if we're spending as much money to check them out as we are repairing. Although I've heard in these meetings that, like, the hospital lights the meters up there because it keeps people moving around in the hospital. Anyway, I, I just think that needs to be looked at because it appears to be, to be a loser.
I'm not going to argue that point with you.
I'm not asking for arguing.
No, no, I would not, I would not. I, I think that, now, some of the revenue that you're not seeing is when she's writing the tickets, and we get to pay.
There's a separate revenue account for fines of $19,000. So that will be directly related to a position.
But I think when you add them both together, it doesn't equal what we're paying her, or paying that position.
That helps me understand it, yeah. I didn't tie those together.
Yeah.
I'm good on that, though. Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I left my notes, so I don't really.
Ms. Katie?
Has the board considered the operating costs of the community center?
We have all looked at, we had some preliminary information on the operating of the community center, but we're going to hope that we'll have, in fact, I know that when the design and bill groups come in, that'll be part of the information that they'll receive, get to the board. It'll tell us how much as far as electric costs and so forth. But as far as programming goes, I think, going back to what Mary Jo had stated, it's very important to get a handle on that, because my concern is exactly, I think, maybe where you're going at here. If we're currently in a deficit in Parks and Rec right now, and you build a bigger building, build it, build a facility for the community, and your Parks and Rec will also be in that facility, you just hope that there's enough revenue being raised that could offset all the costs, or at least make the deficit shrink, not go up. So to answer your question, I have looked at it, and we just need to make sure that we have the right programming in place to offset the costs.
What makes the board so confident you're going to get the grants? You said you spoke to the state delegation?
I have.
What has they, what have they told you?
I don't want to get into certainly any conversations, because like you said, they have to take it to a vote. But I would, I would say that I feel extremely comfortable that they will fight to fight for the Town of Elton for community center.
And I would add to it, you know, anytime you're going after a grant, you are pretty much, how do I want to put that? Anytime you go for a grant, you're pretty much assured that you're going to get it.
And also, the one good thing, like, the community legacy grant, which was submitted yesterday, it was due today at 3:00 o'clock, but it was submitted, and that was tried for last year, but we did not have all the information needed to actually get the grant. We, or Jean Mennar, I should say, is, was very prepared. She had all the information she needed, you know, the plan, but, so we're, you know, we're in a much better place this year than we were for this community legacy grant.
And also, we have a very good history of obtaining grants while going at them, so, you know, you put that on the positive side as well. So, like Paul said, for me, you know, you look positive in going after the things you need and help to offset the fines.
I agree, but last year, weren't there grants you got to apply to, and you would get, like Mary Jo said?
No, she didn't have everything in place for it. So, and that grant actually.
And you have everything now, is what you're saying?
Elton, you know, the state wants, if they give you grant money, they want to make sure you use it.
Right.
And we have. So last year, she was able, or the year, yeah, it was last year, the year before, she was able to get for the parking lot off Main Street. And this is the same grant she submitted to, like this, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lemon?
Where she's coming from is important. We, before we signed a contract to build this building, we need a pro forma revenue and expense on the total thing of what we think we're getting from the programs and all the costs that you mentioned. I think that's really important to know where we are on the thing. And, you know, maybe it's a loser, maybe it's a winner, and sometimes losers are social programs that you put in place anyway, but we just definitely need to know where we are before we.
That's why you budgeted 3.5. At the worst case, it's going to be 3.5. So if we can get the grant money.
That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about operating when it, when it starts.
I will make sure, I, listen, I will not vote in favor of it unless we've got that pro forma. I agree with you 100%. I think, I think every one of the boards on, in that direction. Mr. Ed Ginder?
I, I think what you're talking about is very important, what Mary Jo brought up. As far as the expenses, it's almost going to double the responsibilities of the Parks and Recreation Department, or are you going to continue to do your outreach programs that are going on now, and continue what might be taking place in the community center? So, you definitely need to look into it.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say? All right, it is 7:35. This public hearing is closed. I closed it on you. Okay, you'll have another opportunity to talk.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you've got plenty of time to talk.
Jump in.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve fiscal year budget ordinance 6-2018, fiscal year 2019 annual budget for introduction purposes only? We have a motion?
Seven.
And a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can we pass that to Steve Repole? Okay, it is now 7:37, and we are opening up the floor for another public hearing. And I'd like to read this. We have to host a public hearing on the constant yield rate. The mayor commissioners of the Town of Elton propose to increase the real property taxes. For the year beginning July 1, 2018, the estimated real property assessable base will increase by 1.6% from $1,120,756.722 to $1,138,748.600. If the Town of Elton maintains the current tax rate of .6356 per $100 of assessment, real property tax revenues will increase by 1.6%, resulting in $114,356 of new real property tax revenues. In order to fully offset the effect of increasing assessments, the real property tax rate should be reduced to .6256, which is the constant yield rate. The town is considering not reducing the real property tax rate enough to fully offset the increased assessments. The town proposes to adopt a real property tax rate of .6356 per thousand of assessment. This tax rate is 1.6% higher than the constant yield rate will generate $114,356 in additional property taxes. So this was the public, this was the notice that was put into the newspaper, and this is for the public hearing here today. The bottom line, this is in regards to the constant yield tax rate. I am proposing that we keep the tax rate the same. It will generate additional revenue to the Town of Elton, but we are maintaining the same rate. Any questions or comments from the board on that? This is a public hearing. Anyone have any questions or any comments in regards to the constant yield rate? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed at 7:39. Do we have a motion to, we need a motion to approve this?
I think it's just a hearing.
Yeah, it was just a hearing.
I don't think there's anything to it.
No, I don't think there is neither.
Yeah, the budget.
I think we do, I think we have to approve the, the constant yield rate, or the tax rate.
That's part of the budget.
Oh, at the budget, at the budget time we do. Okay, very good. Very good. All right, I'm going to take over the role of Lou George here again. Next up on the agenda, we have Resolution R 6-2018, and this resolution is amending the charter of the Town of Elton specifically Article 14 penal provisions under C14-1 offenses. So I'm going to tell you what we're changing, the infractions. Currently, the infractions under this charter was a fine not to exceed $100. We want to change that to $1,000. The fine shall be paid by the offender to the Town of Elton within 20 calendar days of the receipt of citation. Repeat offenders shall be assessed a fine not to exceed $1,000. This, if approved tonight, would take, become law on the 50th day from tonight. John, you reviewed this, and everything seems to be in line and in order.
Lisa actually spirited that, but yes, I reviewed everything.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 6-2018?
Still waiting.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the charter change? And it's changing the increase of the fine. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We already signed that one. All right. Next up, okay, last meeting, I had asked the board to consider including, in the ordinance with the waiver of the major facility fees, a waiver of the front foot assessment charges related to non-commercial dwellings. So, Ordinance 7-2018, under Title 13, Chapter 13.04, what we'd like to do is change, or to provide in this ordinance, a waiver for front foot assessment relating to non-commercial dwellings. Also, in this, it would be pertaining to front foot assessment charges, and it's for non-commercial dwellings. Let me see, everything else in it is the same until we get to the back. And a waiver of the front foot assessment charges shall apply to non-commercial dwellings, including new construction and existing dwellings, and shall expire on August 31, 2019. And that would be consistent with the waiver that we provided earlier in the fiscal year. So what we did is we just, I'd like to have a motion to accept Ordinance 7-2018, which will allow for the waiver of front foot assessments in front of these properties.
Also.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion in regards to the front foot assessment waiver? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Question, Rob. Is the town going to make an effort to try to get these homes annexed into town?
You can, you can ask me that here shortly, Mr. Ed Ginder.
Sorry.
All right, the next item, Ordinance 8-2018 is amending the code of the Town of Elton, Chapter 1, for a general penalty, and this is presented for introduction. I wanted to mention that the waiver, of course, was also prevented, presented for introduction. So this is only for introduction only. The purpose of amending the code of the Town of Elton, Title 1, Chapter 1.08, general penalty establishing a maximum fine for infractions consistent with the local government Article NDA Code of Maryland, designating, designating the building official and his or her agents for issuing civil citations for municipal infractions. So what this will allow us to do is, let's see here, going back, the board shall by official act declare a violation of such, which ordinance ordinances shall be in a fraction or infractions, and each such violation, a specific fine shall be set. The fine shall never exceed $1,000, which we brought in for introduction there a little while ago, and $1,000 for a repeat or continuing violation. What we wanted to do is specify that it was the building official and his or her agents are the ones that would be able to write these fines. Is that correct, John, am I saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and what it does here now is failure to pay the fine would be, in no case, the fine shall be, see, $1,000, set forth under this chapter. So this is only for introduction purposes, if you have any, do we have a motion to accept Ordinance 8-2018?
Aye, so move for introduction purposes, all right.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's been introduced. All righty. All right, two more items here, from Lou George. The Town of Elton is, or the Elton Alliance is requesting a alcoholic beverage grant of waiver. The first item I have in front of me is for the Fall Fest Downtown Activities. It would be from September 14, 2018, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and then on the following day, from September 15, 2018, from 12:00 to 8:00. Once again, it's for the Fall Fest Downtown Activities. Do we have a motion to accept the grant of waiver?
Move.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the alcoholic waiver restriction for the grant of waiver? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the next grant of waiver for alcoholic beverage restriction is also being presented from the organization, the Elton Alliance. The date of the waivers being requested are for the downtown car show events, so I'm going to list the next four dates, May 24, 2018, June 28, 2018, July 26, 2018, August 23, 2018, and the waiver would be in effect from 4:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. Do we have a motion to allow this waiver?
Some of it.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Yes, in the event that is rain, you might want to include the date, the rain date, but cover that.
We don't have a rain date.
No, it's just the kids.
No, no rain dates.
Oh, right.
Okay, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All righty. I don't think I have anything after all that. Actually, I do. I wanted to get the board's permission. I would like to apply to the Cecil County Video Lottery Local Community Grant to apply for some funding to hopefully do the new proposed boardwalk, which would go from Route 213 to through Marina Park up to the Route 40 bridges. So I'm going to ask for funding for the, I'm going to say the, the study and the, I think this would also include the engineering costs for that. So I just wanted to let the town know, if I, I don't need a vote on it, but is everyone good with that?
Yes.
Very good. I'm going to, we're going to be asking for $65,000 from the video lottery grant, but we'll see what, how we go. All right. With that, I wanted to congratulate our commissioners, Jean Brummel and Mary Jo Jablonsky, for their election. And we had our election last week, and all three of us seemed to come out on top. Next meeting, we will be getting sworn in by the charter. It says the first meeting in June, so we will be sworn in again for an additional four years. Very good. So Mary Jo, you're on.
Congratulations to everyone also, and thank you to everyone who supported us. The only thing I have is the Town of Elton Memorial Day Parade. I think it's going to be bigger and better than ever. Well, I know it is, because we had a lot of people sign up this minute, like I told Katie, it happens every year. But we will have the town float in there, and if the mayor and commissioners would please be a part of it, it's 10 a.m. on Monday morning. Dan called today and said the float will be going, so.
I bet.
And also, our. And also, our grand marshal is Colonel Robert Phillips from APG. And he requested after the parade if he could just talk with all of us right on the corner. I think Colonel or General, what is it? Randy Taylor. He got out of his car to talk and meet people last year at the corner. But... And take some pictures. And he would like to know if you will be there because his assistant would like everyone's name and who's going to be there. So if you could get back to me, that would be great.
Perfect. Nelson?
Sure.
Congratulations to Jean and Mary Jo. I told you it's going to be yours. Robert, do it easy for you.
All right, thank you.
Maybe that night.
Was daddy.
Anyhow, laughter's good for you. But anyhow, Mary Jo, I'll be there on the 30th. And thanks to people, even though you're two in number, for coming tonight.
Jean?
And thank you. Congratulations, Mayor and Mary Jo. And also, I want to thank everyone publicly for their support. And Michelle, the work you did that day was tireless. I know you'll make sure that the election committee has our gratitude also. And I will be there on the 28th.
And you know what's so good about Michelle? I guess we all love her for not only the job that we do, we love her for who she is. And, you know, she was going through a tragedy during that time. And, you know, she's a real trooper. And we respect you and we thank you for what you've done.
That's so true.
We certainly do. Okay, this is the time of the meeting. We open up the floor. I'm going to tee it up for Mr. Givlin. He had sent a letter in to me today. And if you don't mind, I'll read it. It's, you know, the higher priority for future pedestrian bridge. And I think you make a good point. He gives us some thank yous at the first. And thank you so much for your kind words. But, you know, I think that the way you feel, I can tell everyone up here on this board feels, you know, in the opinion, the Delver Avenue Bridge over the Big Elk is far the most dangerous hazardous place. When going over that bridge recently, he felt like it was a Russian roulette and squeezed by the passing traffic that he thought he was going through a birth canal. You know, the... Our council has taken steps. And to fund this pedestrian bridge to address the time, time is of the essence.
I revise.
Okay, but listen, it's good. I liked exactly what you're saying. I want to stress to you that, you know, it won't be a Taj Mahal. It's going to be a practical bridge. I spoke with a former... Our former engineer, which is Brian Morgan. He worked with KCI, and he just left them four weeks ago. And I met with him out here in the parking lot. He's on our historic committee. And he felt pretty comfortable that as he left KCI and left the town of Elton, the one thing that he feels that we have got going the right way is this pedestrian bridge. And I wish I could give you an update right now on it because I don't know where Lou is. But I can tell you, every day, if you saw his computer, someone from this board sends him a little note. And he sends it directly to the state. And there'll be someone from the state that'll make a comment back. So the ball is moving. It is moving. Not as fast as any of us feel. It should be moving a lot faster. Anything else to say, sir?
Yes, please. First of all, congratulations, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners Jean Brummel and Mary Jo Jablonsky, on your reelections. These absolutely are votes of confidence and reflect the growth and prosperity the town has experienced under your guidance. As an example, Elton has become more business friendly. And the downtown expansion is witness to this. I did want to address a separate issue tonight. And I want to say... Prefer to simply saying that... Let me start this way. About 30 years ago, I remember a public service announcement on TV that claimed it's rush hour and one out of 50 drivers is drunk. The rate of alcohol breaks probably has not changed that much since 1990. But the situation on the roads has become worse due to the advent of cell phones and addicted texting, as well as the opioid crisis. Distracted and DUI drivers, as well as Americans' growing use of SUVs, which I didn't know, have increased the percentage of pedestrian accidents and fatalities. I know the town council has been handling pedestrian safety issues in a straightforward manner. This is evident by the work in progress on sidewalk improvements on Northbridge Street, White Wall Road, and other areas, championed by Commissioner Brummel. What I'd like to highlight today is the proposed pedestrian bridge. And while I wrote that earlier essay, emotions were high. I know Michelle was telling me that the town has faced some significant challenges and roadblocks presented by federal and state government regulations and restrictions, and something about 100 of an inch increase in the water level. But the Delver Avenue Bridge remains a bottleneck. I think it is dangerous for pedestrians. Besides selfish reasons, since I walk over the bridge quite a bit, and my own fear of crossing the bridge, a separate bridge that safely bypasses this really is a necessity. And should not be delayed if possible. And I was thinking, you know, if there's any possibility of a temporary bridge built on the side of the existing road bridge, or maybe slightly on top into the side, you know, like a side monorail going over, right, to draw from the bridge's own structural integrity. And, you know, it's just that, you know, something to consider, that it really is a bottleneck. And it is dangerous. And I know you're working on it. If something temporary could be made, you know, that is safe, please consider it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say aside tonight? Mr. Ginder? How's your time?
The front foot assessment.
Yes, sir.
Is the town going to send letters to those people who would be eligible? I think it might be a good marketing tool that if you can calculate the front foot assessment as to what they would be saving as to being hooked up.
I think that's a great suggestion.
And at the same time, try to annex them to the town. Get the tax revenue.
Okay, it is a three-minute stay, and this meeting is adjourned.